There he is. I call this meeting to order of the Marshalltown City Council. It is 10, uh, we are at the council chambers, 10 West State Street, July 28th, 2025 at 5:30 PM. Will you all stand and join me with the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, with which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Lotte. Actually, I was here on time, but I was downstairs talking to our new door person. As you know, to get in late, you have to have somebody let you in. It's our new park and rec person, and I had to tell her how much I liked her op-ed piece in The Times Republican recently, which I did. It was great. I just got to have her on board. Well, welcome. Can I borrow one of your sheets or, because I haven't fired mine up? Thanks. All right. Roll call.
Fonseca?
Here.
Cal?
Here.
Lottie Hoff?
Here.
Mitchell?
Here.
Nichols?
Here.
Schneider?
Here.
Thompson?
Here.
Very good. Public comment time. Members of the public may make any comments on any item that was not on the agenda during this time. You may approach the mic and state your name and address. Limit your comments to three minutes unless they are authorized longer. And director comments to the mayor and council as a whole, and the mayor and council may not respond to a public comment like that and shall not. They may respond, may provide a response to public comment, but shall not engage in discussion or debate on the items raised by members of the public. So no action may be taken on those items raised in the public comments to comply with the open meetings law. And then at the very end, when we have discussion items, the rules change a little bit. Any council or mystery comments tonight?
Did it again.
You know, I was only gone for the last two meetings. Well, I was screwing up in those two. It is public comment time, so the microphone is open and I was rushing the. We have a bet going about how long the meeting's got to go tonight.
Danielle Leekin, 1310 West Main Street, Executive Director of Marshalltown Central Business District. Just wanted to provide a recap on Ridiculous Day that was held this past Saturday at our temporary location on State Street in partnership with the Cart Rate Market. It was a record-setting day for the market. That was the most people they've ever had come through their market. So the previous record was 434. They feel like they probably missed some, but their count was 751. In addition to the first responders and National Guard, we had five local organizations come out and provide kids activities. Overall, we've heard good things. I've only heard from one retailer. They said that their sales were comparable to last year's Ridiculous Day, and overall they felt like it was a really great event, and they were really happy with it, so.
Very good.
And we are getting ready to. Our next events will be Haunt the Block, October 23rd, and then Holiday Stroll will be November 23rd, and we've already started planning for that. So that's what's coming up.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Good evening. Heather Thomas, Public Works. Wanted to provide a quick update and some positive news on downtown construction. This past Saturday, we had a lot of pavement go down, which is a positive. And then today is July 28th. Our completion date for the first phase on Center Street is August 28th. So tomorrow, we are entering our last month of construction. So weather permitting, Phase One will continue as planned, and we are targeting to be done within that completion date. A couple of things I wanted to clear up. There was some information this morning that was shared that the crosswalk between East and West Main was closed. That's not quite accurate. We have temporarily relocated it. So on the picture here, you will notice previously it was in line with the sidewalk that went, you know, between Zamora's and then West Main. So if you're walking down that sidewalk right now, it'll look closed because there's orange snow fence there, but if you just turn and go 20 feet north, we still do have that temporary crosswalk in, and it will be like that here for the next week or so. As we look ahead, probably paving operations, weather permitting, almost every day. As we look at the next two days, we have some paving going on in the intersection itself. So our pumper truck will be on West Main Street, and we'll have concrete trucks coming in and out of West Main. We're starting at 6:30 in the morning, so hopefully by the time the 10 o'clock, 11 o'clock opens up, we'll have the road back open, but there will be some parking restrictions during that 6:30 to 9:30 time in the next two days. Thank you.
Thanks, Heather.
Lonnie Hoagland, 1480 East Main. I guess many people probably saw a TR article today that said, "I'm very interested in sitting in one of your chairs," and I just want to help people. I want to be a bridge for a citizen to do good, and I want to invite all the citizens to come up and sit in the chairs and be part of the Make Marshall Town Great, and I'm here to help out however I can.
I'll try to talk loud because I can't reach. My name's Dan Klain, K-L-E-E-N, from Pocahontas, Iowa. I'm with the executive director of the Iowa Highway Vehicle Association. Just wanted to take an opportunity to thank the city council and the city of Marshalltown, especially Carol Webb, for working so hard with Jessica Flatt, getting the cooperative agreement together for the Iowa River OHV Club in the Nicholson Ford Park. If there's any questions we could do or try to answer, let me know, but appreciate all your support.
Thank you. There will be some discussion later tonight on it.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks for introducing yourself. It's a fun area out there, actually. Anybody else?
Hello. Marco Yepes Gomez, 11 North Sixth Street. I believe that great transportation is a right to everyone regardless of their age, income, or health. Today, I wanted, I wanted to understand how our public transit system operated in town, so I took the closest route from my house to Walmart and back. For context, I live near Rogers Elementary. As a person that is proud to be from Marshalltown, I was embarrassed on how terrible it was. The route planning budget on our government website is broken. Google Maps is poorly integrated with our routes. You have to be internet literate to understand routes or ask the driver for clarifications. It feels awkward waiting on the street corners because there's no hints letting you know the boss will stop there. The routes are super inconvenient to the rider, and the worst part is my round trip took me two hours and 15 minutes to complete. Again, two hours and 15 minutes. That was embarrassing. I literally could have gone to the first Walmart in D-Mond by car and came back quicker than this Walmart. And to add more salt to the wound, the most vulnerable people were only riding the bus: children, moms, the elderly, veterans, and people who appear to be struggling financially. It makes zero sense why people who are using the most efficient and beneficial form of transportation for our town are being punished by having a terrible experience and on top of that, paying more for the same trip to Walmart than using a car. When budgeting comes, I ask council to connect with their constituents who are most affected, who are most affected by our terrible public transit system and make it top priority to properly fund a fix. Thank you.
Anyone else? Now it's time to solicit any comments up here. Your honor, if I may. Piggybacking on to what Heather talked about a little bit, about all the construction uptown, I just want to remind people to continue to use the businesses uptown. This is a very big deal. They're doing the best they can do. We're going as fast as we can go, and if you, a little bit of inconvenience parking and walking a little bit, probably helps them quite a bit. Thank you. I was going to say the same thing, actually. My wife's not in the cast, but she's non-weight bearing with crutches, so we're going to be eating out a little bit more often. And Ocean City and Zeno's Pizza and Subcity and the Dreamont, the people are still able to get there with no trouble. We have a lot of parking here. In fact, we have more parking than we're supposed to have for our population with lots here and the lots back there, and even in front of Subcity today, it wasn't a problem. So do enjoy that, too. And I guess I did already mention the park and rec, our park and rec director. I assume she was introduced to you at an earlier meeting since I've been missing so many of them lately, but that op-ed piece really was nice, and the thing I liked about it the most was it didn't even brag about the fact she is now publishing on social media and on our webpage more than we used to do in terms of things available for people in signups and that kind of thing. So that one's become a more user-friendly and public information type of thing. So I was, we're pleased to have her on board, even if she's the newest person on staff who has to do the door duty downstairs, so we apologize about that. All right, well, that's it.
Your honor, could I say something?
You may.
I just wanted to say how much better the Sixth Street softball complex and Lynn Creek District looks with that new bridge. I think, you know, I have the vaguest memories when I was a very little child of the viaduct opening. I think that was the timeframe, would have been pretty young. But it's hard to believe that we have sat there and looked at that old bridge for 40 years before we did something about it. I think the term is called ischemia, where you see something that becomes invisible no matter how ugly it is, and I think we need to keep that in mind as we do improvements in town. Thanks.
Fortunately, my wife has that. People were wondering, how come we couldn't use the old one? And the answer is talk to the engineers, because you have to be able to drive an emergency vehicle over them, and they couldn't sign off on that one. So we needed one to do it, but yeah, it really does look nice, doesn't it? It's true. All right.
Oh, I was just going to mention, Kelsey has been a fantastic addition to the Parks and Rec team, but I do want to also recognize Carrie Morris, who is our office manager in the Parks and Rec Department, who also happens to have some marketing background. And, and she has really added a special touch to doing outreach and public engagement work in the Parks Department, so I didn't want to leave her out of that conversation.
Thank you. I wish I had said that because I noticed that the last time I was in there. And the council are up, too. It's not like she's less busy than her predecessor. She's busy as she can be, so, yeah. That's good. All right, now it's probably time to solicit a motion to approve our consent agenda.
Move to approve.
Roll call.
Nichols?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Fonseca?
Yes.
Cal?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Fonseca?
Yes.
Cal?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Very good. Carry on to motions. Two of those, what's our first one?
Motion to approve a five-day Class C retail alcohol license with outdoor service for a midnight ballroom for a rodeo on August 9th at the Central Iowa Fairgrounds with a temporary license premise change for the Central Iowa Fairgrounds.
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seems like we do this one every year, don't we? For the rodeo? Yeah. It's also a big draw, too. I know you've got the racers coming into town, Mike, but the rodeo is drawing people in here. Any public comment? If there aren't any other comments up here? Roll call.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Fonseca?
Yes.
Cal?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Very good. Carry on to motions. Two of those, what's our first one?
Motion to approve a five-day Class C retail alcohol license with outdoor service for a midnight ballroom for a rodeo on August 9th at the Central Iowa Fairgrounds with a temporary license premise change for the Central Iowa Fairgrounds.
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seems like we do this one every year, don't we? For the rodeo? Yeah. It's also a big draw, too. I know you've got the racers coming into town, Mike, but the rodeo is drawing people in here. Any public comment? If there aren't any other comments up here? Roll call.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Fonseca?
Yes.
Cal?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Very good. Carry on to motions. Two of those, what's our first one?
Motion to approve a five-day Class C retail alcohol license with outdoor service for a midnight ballroom for a rodeo on August 9th at the Central Iowa Fairgrounds with a temporary license premise change for the Central Iowa Fairgrounds.
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seems like we do this one every year, don't we? For the rodeo? Yeah. It's also a big draw, too. I know you've got the racers coming into town, Mike, but the rodeo is drawing people in here. Any public comment? If there aren't any other comments up here? Roll call.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Very good. Carry on to motions. Two of those, what's our first one?
Motion to approve a five-day Class C retail alcohol license with outdoor service for a Fletcher House Speakeasy at 202 East Church Street.
Move for approval.
Second.
Discussion on this one?
Yes, your honor.
and she has really added a special touch to doing outreach and public engagement work in the Parks Department, so I didn't want to leave her out of that conversation.
Thank you. I wish I had said that because I noticed that the last time I was in there. And the council are up, too. It's not like she's less busy than her predecessor. She's busy as she can be, so, yeah. That's good. All right, now it's probably time to solicit a motion to approve our consent agenda.
Move to approve.
Okay. Roll call.
Nichols?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Fonseca?
Yes.
Kell?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Very good. Carrie, on to motions. Two of those. What's our first one?
Motion to approve a 5-day Class C retail alcohol license with outdoor service for a midnight ballroom for a rodeo on August 9th at the Central Iowa Fairgrounds with a temporary license premise change for the Central Iowa Fairgrounds.
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seems like we do this one every year, don't we?
Yes.
For the rodeo? Yeah. It's also a big draw, too. I know you've got the racers coming into town, Mike, but the rodeo is drawing people in here. Any public comment? If there aren't any other comments up here? Roll call.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Fonseca?
Yes.
Kell?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Very good. That carried. And our second and last motion.
Motion to approve a new Class C retail alcohol license with outdoor service for the Fletcher House Speakeasy at 202 East Church Street.
Move for approval. Second.
Discussion on this one.
Yes, Your Honor. This is a new venue that'll be opening with a Class C license, so they'll serve beer, wine, and cocktails. It will be open seven days a week. It's also going to be available to rent for events, and then upstairs, there are seven office spaces that will be available.
This is the former building that was the County Historical Society?
That's correct.
Yeah.
Denny Gray is the applicant on this.
Okay. And he's actually run other establishments in town?
Correct.
Police chief, we don't have any negative comments on this one, do we?
No, we do not.
Nope, I wouldn't think so. Very good. Any public comment on it? Roll call.
Kell?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Fonseca?
Yes.
Very good. That carried. That really is a pretty building. I'm kind of anxious to go see it inside. Resolutions. What's our first one?
Resolution authorizing the use of council-designated local option sales tax for a professional services agreement with Iowa EMS consultants for the Emergency Medical Services Consolidation feasibility study and implementation plan.
Let's call for motion first. To approve it?
Second.
Very good. Discussion.
Hello, Mayor and Council. Christopher Cross with the Marshall Town Fire Department. Before you is a request, a resolution for local option sales tax dollars to enter into an agreement, partnership with the county, to execute an agreement with a consultant to study the problem or the question of what does EMS look like in Marshall County moving forward and on into the future. This is an agreement that will initiate a professional study by the consultant group to study and get information from all stakeholders and develop what the EMS system can look like in the future and how it will be implemented, considering all demographics and financial implications from EMS as an essential service, legislation, ambulance billing, and so on and so forth. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have about the project at large or this particular resolution.
Any council questions or comments first? Public comment? You may be called back up, Chief, to answer them.
I'll stay. Stay close.
Tim Bradbury, 12 North 10th Avenue. If there's several points that we want to bring up so that they are discussed and covered, can we, as a public, address that commission separately, or how could they... Or are they the only ones that's going to ask questions to... Because my concern is, they created this problem with the hospital closing down and moving outside of town with only 10 rooms to use and making it basically a transportation center to go to all the different hospitals that they created this point to have so much transportation needed and causing more cost to us as a public and Marshall Town citizens. And I hate to see the county and city be billed for this extra. And in Arkansas, where my dad lives, they have a thing where they're paid like... They pay like $75. It went up to $95 a year for... And then it's non-limited if they have to use ambulance service, but things like that can... Is there going to be a way to people bring up things like this so we can address and see the whole picture, whether we should be carrying this load, or is it really Unity's fault for them basically closing down the hospital down here and having service and making it as a transportation center out there?
Good question, sir. Thank you. Good question. That is... I would eventually guess that that's probably four or five steps down the road in history when we start offering public meetings to talk with stakeholders. But yes, that is... That's something that we wanted to talk with the public about. We have to have information sessions to educate the public as to what exactly the situation is, and that's part of the working group's plan in the future is to get... To engage the public, to educate them on what the situation actually is, and solicit input as to how... What they're thinking about. And what the gentleman was describing, I'm not so sure that it's legal in Iowa. It's a subscription-based service to EMS entities. That's... I don't know that that's said anywhere in Iowa code that we do that here, just for your information, I suppose.
Chief?
Yes.
When they come back, when the consultants come back, they're going to give us several... Or give us different scenarios of how we can do that, is that correct?
Yeah, yes. We've asked them to give us different options. Under each option, to like outline the logistical pathway to making that possible. Who would be the authority having jurisdiction in administering the program? What it would look like for revenue coming in from not only the different levels of legislative permissive levies for EMS, as well as a projected ambulance receipt billing type of financial outlook based on the number of runs that currently exist in the Marshall Town, Marshall County area.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comments? I guess...
Marco Yepes Gomez, 11 North Sixth Street. I've always had a supportive or opposing opinion for almost every issue that has been on the council agenda, but this specific EMS issue has me stumped. I've read and seen informative content regarding hospital deserts, but no reading or video addresses my Marshall Town-specific concerns. The rhetoric around the issue seems to only be fixated on the county versus how Marshall Town is specifically impacted. And I'm worried that the consultation will mirror that rhetoric and ignore crucial questions Marshall Town voters will, like myself, will be asking. Questions like, "Does Marshall Town itself have an ambulance desert? Are Marshall Town residents specifically contributing to the Unity Point deficit? Is Unity Point committed to stopping their service with Marshall Town soon? What's the feasibility for Marshall Town to have our own city ambulance service? And what's the comparison of that versus the county-wide levy?" I want to iterate what I said last time. This issue of ambulance deserts is a federal issue or at most a state issue. For whatever reason, we've conditioned ourselves to be okay with the state and federal politicians to focus on irrelevant issues and pass important issues to our vulnerable cities. I personally think it's disgusting and incredibly dumb for the federal government to give nearly $170 billion to the DHS a few weeks ago, meanwhile letting their rural Americans to starve and looking at their nearest, most productive town to fix their healthcare issues. I'm sure experts on the ambulance issue would agree with me that even a billion dollars of those $170 billion to the DHS would have fixed this issue for a few years in the entire state, but yet these politicians refuse to give us even those type of crumbs. To be clear, I am not here to complain about raising taxes, but rather I want to know the actual impact this ambulance desert crisis has on Marshall Town specifically. If there is a crisis or real risk in Marshall Town, I am supportive to being pragmatic in fixing the issue the best way we can. Thank you.
Lonnie Hoglin, 1408 East Main. It's kind of part of it, but kind of not. We need to make sure that the city and hospital work hand-in-hand together and come up with an agreement that works great for both. And I need everybody to know that Mr. Chris Jones was doing a toe with me Sunday morning at 4:18 in the morning when I looked at my watch, and my son was there, and he's looked up, and he says, "Dad, that's the police chief over there." And he was the officer that sealed the deal and said, "Thanks for coming out, boys. That is a nice gentleman right there. We're glad to have him." He's doing an EMS call. The head of the chain is there, doing it.
Thank you.
One more comment, Mayor?
You can come by any time you want on this one.
Just one more comment on this. Thank you for the time to present this. The reason why we are here, the reason why we're studying this problem, is because there's... At the state level, there's no... EMS is not designated as an essential service by code, the way that Chapter 100 says fire protection is a essential service and law enforcement is an essential service that cities must provide to their residents and the constituents. The EMS system in Marshall Town has operated at a handshake level since its inception. Through the kindness of the hospital and the county and the city have been the beneficiaries of that for a very long time. There is no formal agreement. There's no contract. The only thing that exists on paper that pertains to EMS between the city and each individual community in the county is a transport agreement that says nothing more than, "Hey, if you have a 911 call, we'll come and transport your patients to the hospital." There's no level of care guarantee. There's no time standards. There's no metrics to measure effectiveness. And so we're trying to... We understand that. We want to make sure that if something happens catastrophically to the EMS system in Marshall County, we want to have a solution proactively loaded and make sure that everybody is spun up on what the situation is, number one, what we're doing about it, number two, and so that they're all informed so that when it's time for us to make a decision, we can do that with relative certainty. Thank you very much for your time tonight. Thank you.
Any other public comment? I apparently can't help myself, but I know too much. Our law firm used to represent the hospital before it went through foreclosure. Several good friends and a wife were on the board as it was trying to keep afloat. It could not given the Medicaid, Medicare reimbursements to doctors and micropalatins our size. It went through bankruptcy, and so we were just damn lucky that Unity Point came along and saw a fit to invest in this city. It would have been stupid to take over the hospital building because that was why the hospital was going under. It's too big, too wieldy to heat and cool, and God bless Unity Point for creating a new hospital building out there with a nice emergency room, and they were able to acquire some of the assets. It did include the five ambulances that the city has helped pay, and you folks as volunteers and contributors, and we did, contribute to buying those very expensive ambulances. Now that it's Unity Point, they have no duty to do anything with the old site that they had, and frankly, if they're losing a million dollars a year, it doesn't make any business sense for them to continue to provide ambulance services because they have no requirement to do so. We regret not having birthing here, but I tell you, if you... And I should admit, I'm the secretary of the Unity Point Foundation, so I go to monthly meetings and I kind of know what's going on out there. If you would find out what the cause of not having an OB department is here, how hard it is to recruit doctors, to have at least two, but maybe more, to have somebody on call. It's why Newton is having trouble in... Well, how many hospitals in Iowa have quit delivering babies? So this is a financial problem for a nonprofit corporation that was kind enough to come into town and build a new hospital for us. So I hope people realize that when we get the reports back from the study... Here, I'll shut up. Let's go ahead and call roll.
Thompson?
Yes.
Fonseca?
Yes.
Kell?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Okay, that carried. That plan will be coming back to us.
Thank you.
Next resolution.
Resolution approving a comprehensive plan amendment for 708 Noble Street, 709 East Lynn Street, and 711 East Lynn Street.
Move to approve.
Thank you. Second. Very good. Discussion.
Good evening. Clayton Ninder, Assistant Director of Housing Community Development. This property might seem a little familiar. Back in June, council approved a rezoning and comprehensive plan amendment for several other parcels adjacent to this site. This request is brought forward by Marshall Town Company as part of their ongoing facility expansion and off-street parking facility expansion. Since your June action, Marshall Town Company has acquired these three additional properties, and now that they are the owners of it, they are seeking to have the comprehensive plan amended to light industrial, and you do have an associated ordinance on your ordinance section of the agenda that would rezone the properties to general industrial with conditions. This has been before the Planning and Zoning Commission, and they have recommended approval.
Thank you. Mics are open up here for comment or questions.
Your Honor, if I may? Clayton, don't sit down. How far west is Marshall Town Company planning to go? And are they looking to make a straight north-south line across, you know, the area? Because I see on one of your maps, 205... What would that be? 205 South 8th Avenue?
Mm-hmm.
Is kind of on an island, gonna be, because that one backyard comes behind them now?
Let me open up.
So, I mean, are they... Do you know what their future... Help me ease my concern that... I'm assuming Marshall Town Company is trying to buy up more property to make that even across everywhere. Do you see 205 down?
Yeah. That's the intent, as it's been explained to me. However, I would have to defer any specifics of ongoing negotiations to the company itself. But it's been explained to me that their intent or desire would be to... Specifically down here on 709, 711, 205 would be to acquire 205.
But do you see how they've created these strips on each street? Are they looking... Are they looking to level it, or is the strip's going to be enough for their parking?
Up along the west side of South 8th, north of East Lynn, they have not made me aware of any further expansion plans. The only indication has been south of East Lynn Street, but I do not know the status of any ongoing negotiations.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Your Honor.
Any other council comments or questions? Public comment on this one? Roll call.
Fonseca?
Yes.
Kell?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
That carried. Next resolution.
Resolution approving Task Order 1 between the city of Marshall Town and McClure Engineering Company for the airport master plan and layout plan update for the Marshall Town Municipal Airport being project number ARP 25001.
Move to approve.
Second. Discussion.
Good evening, Heather Thomas, Public Works. The item in front of you is to continue work out at the airport. A lot of times, airport projects, especially capital projects, are funded primarily by federal government and local government, sometimes with state government mixed in there. Right now, for us to do our next priority, which is addressing the runway pavement condition, the FAA, in order for them to participate financially in that project, which is in the millions, requires us to do some updates to our master plan and our airport layout plan. Generally, FAA recommends master plan updates every seven to 10 years. Our last one was completed in 2001 with a small update in 2010, so we're at 15 years old. And then our most recent airport layout plan was dated in 2008. As part of this work, we will be developing a stakeholder advisory committee, which will help define and direct some of the master plan activities. We will also be reaching out to 15 additional stakeholders that use the airport to understand the type of aircraft, activity levels, and runway length needs out there. As part of the master plan, we'll be doing an airport inventory, review and determination of runway safety areas, conduct an airport geographic information system survey, and update the FAA's electronic airspace items, forecast activity, demand, and airport capacity that will be the facilitating design criteria for a rehab or improvement project to the runway. Included will also be a 20-year capital improvement plan, and then mentioning updating the airport layout plan. So with this, we ask for your approval this evening.
Okay. Floor's open. Well, first, any comments or questions up here? Public comment? Let's call a roll on this one.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Fonseca?
Yes.
Kell?
Yes.
Very good. That carried. Next resolution.
We have a public hearing and resolution to approve the urban renewal plan amendment We have a public hearing and resolution to approve the Urban Renewal Plan Amendment for the Marshalltown Urban Renewal Area Number Three.
Public hearing. Where's my cheat sheet on that? You didn't get any written comments, I assume?
No, Your Honor.
I used to have this taped up here and you'd think by now I would remember. Oh, thank you. This one tells me what to do if somebody acts up out there, actually. The other one says closed session procedure and it's got about 17 items, but this one says, you've read the title, the public hearing is open and it's actually open about 6:02. We ask for staff review next.
Your Honor, Mayor and Council, this proposed amendment of the Urban Renewal Plan for Marshalltown Urban Renewal Area Number Three relates to an amendment authorizing the undertaking of the urban renewal project related to the shops at Marshalltown. It's in connection with the renovation and redevelopment of the existing Marshalltown Mall. Note, this is not approval of a development agreement, it simply authorizes the council's ability to enter into a development agreement. Council will consider the development agreement at its next meeting.
Very good, then. We did switch the order, which makes a lot more sense because now it's time for public comment, which used to precede the comments of staff. But if anybody wants to comment on this one, it's your turn. I don't see anybody standing up or running to the microphone, so I will close the hearing at 6:05 PM and solicit a motion and then have council member discussion.
Move to approve, Your Honor.
Second. Any discussion up here? Roll call.
Cal.
Yes.
Ladihoff.
Yes.
Mitchell.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Fonseca. Yes.
Very good, that carried. Our next one?
Public hearing and resolution approving plan specifications, form a contract, and costs for the 2020 Durasio CDBG Dr. Tree Replanting Project in the City of Marshalltown, Iowa, being project number PRK 24002.
6:06 is the time for the public hearing being open and I ask for staff review.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Kelsey Stafford, Park and Recreation Director. We have received funds to complete this project from Iowa Economic Development Authority that will cover the cost of planting 200 trees. We're asking that we release the plan specifications and that you approve those here today, and we're looking forward to completing that project.
Thank you. And we didn't get any written comments this time?
No, Your Honor.
Do you ever get any written comments?
Rarely.
Public comment?
Erin Carpenter, 802 North Fourth Street. I am so excited about this project. It's been coming for a while and I'm so glad that it's finally here. My hope for this project is that it won't be an end point, but a springboard. Putting the trees in Ward One is a fantastic project. They are most needed there. I did a little bit of math, though. If we're gonna replace our tree canopy, if we want to have a canopy that is resilient and serves the community, paying 100, no, sorry, $890 per tree would cost us 100 or 200 million dollars to re-treat the whole community. So we cannot do this on a grant-by-grant basis. 200 new trees is great, but I hope that this will be a, that after this, that we will have support for expanding plantings, expanding and front-loading more replanting efforts in the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Erin. Saw your picture in the paper recently with the Trees Forever group that was out there planting, so thank you for that. Okay, any other public comment? Otherwise, we'll close the public hearing at 6:08 PM and solicit a motion to move forward. Or comment. So move.
Second.
Any other comment up here?
I have a question, Your Honor. I remember when I was at University of Iowa, they had, I think, female genko trees at the Pinnacle Crest and they were terrible once a year. And I was wondering if we've specified whether we're gonna have male or female genkos. I don't, I didn't see it in the document, but whatever one doesn't produce the smelly fruit is what we should get because I would hate to be a neighbor of one of those.
We'll make a note of that. Yeah.
We do have a specified tree list of what we are asking for bidders to submit on those. I don't recall if that species is on there, but we do have the opportunity to make substitutions, so we will definitely make note of that.
Okay, yeah, the genkos are on there and they're a beautiful tree, but there's one that's bad, so, yeah, please look into that.
We will, thank you.
That graduated, what, '78? So I don't think we had any trees on the campus. Any other comments up here? Otherwise, let's call the roll.
Cal.
Yes.
Ladihoff.
Yes.
Mitchell.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Fonseca.
Yes.
Very good. Carried, next item.
Public hearing and resolution approving a 20-year lease agreement between the City of Marshalltown and the Iowa River OHV Club for the operation, maintenance, and development of the Marshalltown Off-Highway Vehicle Park.
Very good. 6:10 is the time of the hearing is open and staff review goes first.
Sure, so this is an agreement between the city and the Iowa River OHV Club. It's the renewal of a just recently expired agreement for the club to operate the off-highway vehicle park. The agreement is a 20-year term and the rent is $1 per year.
And kind of like with the gun club, this club takes care of the property, right?
They do and it's open to the public.
Very good, thank you. And for those that don't know, it's out on the northeast side of town, pretty much right near the, to the northeast of the path out there. You didn't get any written comments on this one, did you?
No, Your Honor.
Okay, next, then it's time for public comment. And no public comment, so we close it at 6:11 and solicit a motion and discussion after that.
Move to approve.
Second, Your Honor.
Any discussion up here?
I'd just like to recognize OHV Club. 25 years ago, Dan and I looked a lot younger and we started that down there. He looks better, I don't. And to watch, and what it really did was it took most of the OHV vehicles off the streets that we were having problems with. It added structure to it. There are people constantly pulling in from not only other parts of the state, but out of state to come ride that because very few communities have a facility like that. We recently added five acres to it where they're building things to go ride over. I'm way too old for it, but I can see it from my backyard. And it's quite a nice little gem to have in Marshalltown for those people. And they do a great job and they teach safety, helmets, make sure your vehicles are registered. It's just been a win-win for the city.
Couldn't agree more. Thank you. Anyone else? Roll call.
Schneider.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Fonseca.
Yes.
Cal.
Yes.
Ladihoff.
Yes.
Mitchell.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Very good, that carried and I thank you too, Dan. It's been fun for kids and adults alike out there. All right, one more public hearing.
Public hearing and resolution approving a 2020 cooperative agreement between the City of Marshalltown and the Iowa River OHV Club and the Iowa Department of Natural Resources for the operation and maintenance of Nicholson Ford OHV Park.
Seems like deja vu all over again, but the hearing's open at 6:13 PM and staff review is next.
Your Honor, this is a, what I would call a companion agreement to the agreement that was just approved, which also includes the Iowa DNR. The DNR provides oversight, grant support, and enforcement for the OHV park.
Thank you. Written comments?
No, Your Honor.
All right, public comment comes next. And seeing no public comment, I'll close the public hearing at 6:13 PM and solicit a motion.
To approve.
Second.
Comments? Roll call.
Thompson.
Yes.
Fonseca.
Yes.
Cal.
Yes.
Ladihoff.
Yes.
Mitchell.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Carried. On to ordinances.
Ordinance 15108 to amend the code of ordinances, City of Marshalltown, Iowa, Chapter 133, offenses concerning minors, third reading.
Move for approval, Your Honor.
Second.
Discussion. Open it to the public on this one, too, then. Roll call. Let me set a record.
Ladihoff.
Yes.
Mitchell.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Fonseca.
Yes.
Cal.
Yes.
Carried, there you go, minors and the other ordinance.
Ordinance 15109 to amend the official zoning map for Lot 12, Block 1, Woods Addition to Marshall, Marshall County, Iowa, and the north 90 feet of Lot 1 and all of Lot 2, Block 2, Benford and Webster's Addition to Marshall, Marshall County, Iowa, from medium-density residential zoning district to general industrial zoning district, first reading.
Move for approval. Second.
This is a companion to the resolution regarding the comprehensive plan amendment earlier
in the meeting. The rezoning request would be from RM, medium-density residential, to GI, general industrial. It would be with conditions. Those conditions being those uses typically allowed by special use permit would be prohibited. All other uses standard, that would be allowed as standard by right within the general industrial would remain allowed. This has been before the Planning and Zoning Commission and they have recommended approval.
Discussion on this one? Public comment? Roll call.
Mitchell.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Fonseca.
Yes.
Cal.
Yes.
Ladihoff.
Yes.
Very good, that carried. And they were on to discussion items. Number one is review of development landscaping standards. Who wants to take the lead on this one?
I'll kick it off. So the city's current standards are governed by Article F of the zoning ordinance. The landscape standards were actually updated and approved in April of 2022, following a more comprehensive ordinance rewrite. We had a recent development proposal, however, that had prompted concerns, some concerns about the reasonableness and flexibility of the current standards. A letter was submitted to City Council regarding this development, which highlighted the costs and practical implications of complying with that code. The city's enforcement of these requirements, we believe, reflect the intent of the ordinance, which is to improve aesthetics, mitigate land use impacts, and increase environmental sustainability. However, we do think that the feedback raises some questions of whether the standards as written are achieving a balance between city goals and development feasibility. So city staff is recommending that we review the landscape standards specifically outside of a comprehensive ordinance rewrite. We have some options related to that. One would be, well, we could get council direction to do nothing. Two, we could refer to the Planning and Zoning Commission to do a review. Or three, we could make sure that in our upcoming review of the comprehensive plan, that we do a thorough review of the development standards as part of that overall process. So we're looking from direction from council.
Mics are open for council suggestions.
Your Honor, if I may.
You may.
Carol, which option would work in a timely manner with the issue at hand?
Well, I certainly think, and Clayton, if you want to come up, Clayton and I discussed this this afternoon, and I think timely-wise, the two choices, between the two, referring to the Planning and Zoning Commission might be slightly more timely, although we're kicking off the comprehensive plan discussion this week. I think our recommendation would be to look at it in terms of the larger comprehensive plan so that you're not, you're not looking at this in isolation relative to other components. And we get a lot of public input during the comprehensive plan process, so I guess our recommendation would be, and feel free to chime in, Clayton, if you'd like, would be to address it as part of the comprehensive plan process.
I would concur with that and add to that point. The request was originated by Marshalltown Company. They have sought and received a variance from Board of Adjustment for their landscaping standards, so they're able to proceed with their project as they need it to proceed for them. So doing this review as part of the comprehensive plan process would not delay their implementation.
Your Honor, if I may?
Sure.
So Clayton, if we have a standard in place as part of the comprehensive rewrite of the planning and zoning, and the Board of Adjustment can make these decisions on their own of what they want to allow to happen, why do we need to do anything, then?
That could be a path and, you know, if someone feels that it's unreasonable, they can seek a variance from Board of Adjustment. They'd have to prove some type of unique site condition, some hardship that it is creating a practical difficulty for their development. So they still have to prove those thresholds to the Board's satisfaction. That's a perfectly acceptable answer to say, we don't need to do anything, but I think as part of our comprehensive plan process, we're gonna be looking wholesale at the community and getting that feedback, that it does present itself as an opportune time to get that broader community feedback. The answer may be, no, we're fine. Let's leave it alone.
Well, the public can go to that Board of Adjustment meeting, too.
Yes.
Correct. So I grew up in Marshalltown, moved away, came back. I remember the canopy we had in Marshalltown and we are far from replacing that. So personally, I don't want to relax any of, you know, I mean, we just voted on something earlier that we're finally gonna plant 200 trees, five years? What's it been? When was the duration? 20, right? 21?
Five years.
Five years ago.
Seven years since the tornado, five years since Durasio.
Yeah, so finally, I mean, this tree canopy thing, I don't see us relaxing anything. And if the Board of Adjustment wants to listen to variances, that's, that's one of the rules we have in place. I'm okay with leaving it the way it is. Thank you, Your Honor.
Other council comment? Public comment?
Good evening, Joe Carter, 610 Elmwood Drive, also President of Marshalltown Company, the variance that we were talking about a little bit earlier. Would it be appropriate to be able to show a little presentation? Can I use a flash drive to do that?
Yes, can we pause the timer and let, yeah, let me.
I can assist you.
Yeah.
That'd be great.
It's on the computer part.
Is it this one here? Yeah. The only one that's up here. Great. I completely understand what Counselor Thompson is talking about. You can go to the Board of Adjustments and have that done. And, but, we're gonna talk about what the code was like in 2010, what it's like today, what got changed in 2022. We're also gonna talk about what it's like to be a business and have to go in front of the Board of Adjustments, all the extra work that has to go on. And are we the sort of community that wants to draw developers in and make it easy for them to build, or more reasonable for them to build? Because I will tell you, this young man who just helped me with the computer, so nice to be able to do that, but he was completely adamantly opposed to what we were talking about doing. It took an invite that Carol was nice enough to come down to our facility and Clayton came with her. And we talked through everything. We talked about what looked reasonable compared to what we'd done before and we got him on board. Except that, when we went to the Board of Adjustments, Clayton was still not in favor of what we were trying to do. And so it passed and it passed narrowly, narrowly, what we wanted to get done down with our parking lot. We'll walk through that and give you a few examples. But what I'm trying to get to is, is in Fayetteville, Arkansas, where we've got over 550,000 square feet, they've become so unreasonable that we've, we're not building in Fayetteville, Arkansas ever again. They have two urban foresters, that's all they do is talk about trees. They've got one thing after another. So even to go in front of their Board of Adjustments doesn't even work because they don't have any time for you. They don't want to hear about it. And I think Marsh Town's got enough issues as a town of 28,000 people. If we're going to try and grow and develop and get more people in here, to have unreasonable code doesn't make any sense to me. So if you want to have safety, if you want to talk about electrical codes, totally get it. I think subcontractors who are electricians should be able to go anywhere, Des Moines. They should be able to go to Davenport. Should be able to go to anywhere in the state, right, and follow the same safety requirements. And it shouldn't be an impedance on what they're trying to do. Our electrical code, was that a problem when we did Crosby Park? Was not the same as Des Moines. And so it made it harder for an electrical contractor who was from Des Moines, who had to change things that was wrong in the code or different in the code here in Marsh Town than it was in Des Moines. I think that's insanity. But what we've done since, in 2022, to make the code on landscaping, I'm sure we probably just, I mean, I'd be shocked if the council and the mayor and the city administrator know that code of landscaping so well. To even be able to understand it is difficult unless you're an urban forester or you've been through urban planning. It's not easy. And so what you passed in previous years, likely you have no idea what you're even talking about. I mean, if somebody knows that, great. But I'm going to walk through this just quickly. That's our facility. That's how it looked in early 2025. So earlier this year, it looked that way. In July, we've now torn down, if you look at, I don't know if I've got a, in the upper left-hand corner or over to the left-hand side, there are now three homes that have been taken down. The old laundromat is now down. So those are the vacant lots. Those are the lots where we're going to put parking for the expansion that is coming. Phase three is the part they're working on right now. It's the addition to, or new employee entrance, new break rooms, et cetera, et cetera, that will be on the very south end of Lynn Street, the corner of 8th and Lynn. And then the picture on the bottom right of that slide shows the addition, phase four, that will be up, two large sections of building that will be built, that will be manufacturing, warehousing space, about 185,000 to 200,000 square feet that will go on there. So you can see phase three and phase four, those green spots that are up there on the diagram, that's the 185,000 square feet that I'm talking about. The small rectangular section that's just below the words "phase three" is that employee entrance, employee break room, et cetera. The blue outlines the parking lot. And what we were talking about is the parking lot on the left, those two on the left-hand side are the sections that we were going through on the landscape variance. That is what we did previously. So when we did the 2019, 2020 parking lot, that's how that parking lot looks today. We'd be building exactly the same thing just to the right of that. And Clayton, if you can remember standing up in our conference room, looking out over that, said, would that be reasonable if we just duplicated that? Now, prior to that conversation, he'd told our folks, no, it wasn't okay. Up there, he said, yeah, that'd be okay. That'd look good. And so if we did, that would be fine. In the green space out front or to the bottom of that picture is a swale, a bio-swale that you have to put in that's required, I think, by the EPA or the DNR. And then after that, there's trees in the background, and there's forester grasses up front, et cetera, et cetera. And so there's the parking lot that we're proposing to do. And with Photoshop, you can do some amazing things. So we took the parking lot that we had built in 2019, 2020, and that's on the left-hand side. And then we changed to, similar to what we proposed on the right side, in that smaller portion where the laundromat used to be. You know, I'm not supposing that many of you hang out on 8th Avenue in our neck of the woods very often. But in 2018, it kind of looked like that in a lot of ways. And that was just the fun sort of stuff we got to live with. Most of that is now down, but there's a few that are left over, like that one's still left over, that one's still left over, that one's still left over. So we've got a number of things we're still trying to clean up and take down, including the three homes and the laundromat that we've already taken down that weren't included in those pictures. That drawing doesn't show up very well, that slide, but it says, "The civil engineering drawings below show our new parking lots and the new required plants and trees." And there they are. It's 101 shrubs. It's five evergreens. It's 22 understory trees and 16 overstory trees. That's 144 plantings within two parking lots. 38 trees and five evergreens to be included in that 144. I just want to think about that for a little bit, whether or not you think that's unreasonable. But that's the code today. That's what the code says we've got to do, is 144 plantings. Because I'm guessing not everybody was at the Board of Adjustments meeting that went through all this. The large grassy area on Main Street for the Marshalltown Public Works Facility, our neighbor, just right next to us, adjacent to it, has five trees. On a property that's much bigger than the two parking lots we're talking about. If you want to go to the Marshalltown Police Fire Department, they have one tree, the tree on the left. The trees that are off there on the right aren't theirs. That's not on their property. They have one tree that obviously they didn't put in, but was there. And so they have one tree, and obviously we know that property is a little bigger than the two parking lots we've got. The city parking lot, just right over here, is three trees. I think it has more spots in that parking lot than what we will have in those two parking lots we're adding. You have three trees. Now, I don't know if that fell under the code for 2022 or whether it fell in the code that was 2010, but that's what you have. And if you think that it's incredibly important that you ought to have more trees and shrubs, I think the city should step up and do what they're saying, and let's do a little bit better. So we were asked to provide 38 trees, five evergreens, and 101 other plantings in an area smaller than each of those three city examples? Even if the city did those projects before the new code, cared about trees, why wouldn't they just go back and plant more? I'm guessing it's a hardship. I mean, for a business like mine that's a manufacturing company that's trying to compete in this world market that we've got, to have to worry about trimming them, doing all that sort of thing, mowing around them, et cetera, et cetera, we want it to look beautiful. I don't think there's any question about that, but it's a pain. So we think we're beautifying our community. That's what we think we're doing. I'd say that over and over again. I think that's what we do. But we believe that the city did it, too, when it built the parking lot, the police fire building, the public works building. I'm not really trying to cast a shot at the city. I think they did what they thought was pretty. They created a beautiful environment with a little statue and that at the police fire station, right? I mean, there's some really cool stuff there. Does it look nice? I think they made the community look better. We just think that the landscape code is unreasonable. I'd even ask you, what was wrong with the previous code? Can you tell me the difference between the two codes?
So Joe, I have a question for you.
Yeah.
What do you think is a reasonable number of trees? Because I'm not talking about the bushes so much. We need canopy, I think. So what would you see as a reasonable number of trees?
Same thing we did in 2010, or 2019, 2020, which was we put, or 2018, 2019, we put in three trees at the end of that, that backstop. We put in the forester grasses. We put in other vegetation. But I think it created a block between us and the homes. I don't think the homes cared. There weren't three trees in the area where we took down the three homes and the laundromat. There weren't three trees there, never have been. So as long as I've been around, there were never any trees in that area. I think you'd have a hard time finding 38 trees in the entire neighborhoods, the four blocks between Boone Street and Main Street where we're building all this stuff. You'd have a hard time finding 38 trees in there. There aren't scrub trees. Sorry, is it truly an ash or an oak or something, a maple that somebody planted and grew and pruned and did all that sort of thing? If you want to talk some of the scrub trees, maybe it's over 38, but you'd have a hard time. So is three enough? If there's issues with that code from previous, then let's fix those issues rather than adopt a code that's unreasonable. That's Joe's presentation. And so I want you to think about what's the city's intent regarding landscaping. You talk about, what do you want? I think you should come up with that and what I talked about earlier. There's some safety concerns when it comes to electrical, how it affects a builder. Can we afford to do more trees and plantings? Yeah, we can. But you're going to push away more developers. You're going to make it harder. We've got to go before Board of Adjustments, do all these things. I just question what we're trying to do. And if you aren't even going to do it on your own property, public land, why are you asking manufacturers and other businesspeople to do exactly what you aren't? So I think it should be reasonable. I shouldn't, I don't think it should be a burden to developers. I think it should be fair. And I don't think it should deter developers. If you do those things, we got to win. But if we don't, we're right where we are.
Your Honor? Joe, I agree with you on a lot of it. The reason why we have to have the codes is not every company is Marshalltown Company. With local ownership, who cares what their facilities look like? I mean, Marshalltown would do the right thing no matter what the code said, but.
We did the code, though, Jeff. Sorry to interrupt you, but you're 100% right. You had a code in 2019, 2020 that you've now changed and made it harder, and you were okay with what we did in 2019, 2020, and it was fine. Didn't violate the code. It was all good. We didn't have to go before the Board of Adjustments, and everything worked. And I don't think, well, I don't know. Everybody's going to have their own opinion. Is what we did down there today, before, and what we're now going to do, it's already been approved by the Board of Adjustments, is that okay? Is that enough? If you don't think it's enough, then how do you change it to make the code reflect what you think is desirable? But if you tell me, Jeff, that you know that code, landscape code, inside and out, and that you're okay with 144 plantings and 38 trees plus five evergreens, we should have a further conversation offline and not in front of Robert Maharry.
No. I do remember when we rewrote the ordinances. This was intended, that we knew, we would find shortcomings. So I would definitely be okay with pushing back to the Board of Adjustments. I think we need to do some studies with other communities as well. I don't think we need, again, I don't know what the code was. I don't know that you know what the code was. We just.
I do know what the code was back then. I've looked it up.
Okay, well, you've looked it up more recently.
To get prepared for tonight. And that's kind of why I showed the picture of what we did in 2019 and 2020, or 2018, 2019.
Is it possible to light that up again, what you created, that beautiful landscape of that parking lot?
Yes, see, Clayton.
Well, you're doing that. And I've been hanging around here for 12 years. I don't remember when we changed the code or why, actually, when we did that. I do remember that the parking lot over on Church Street was going to be the one beautiful one that really did kind of end up being behind the tree mout now. That one, I think, just had that one really scraggly tree that everybody kind of liked, and somebody knitted something to put around it just so it didn't look quite so forlorn. But when we redid that one, I don't think we put any new trees in there.
Thank you. That's perfect.
Your Honor, it was updated as part of a comprehensive rewrite in April of 2022.
My suggestion would be to don't work so hard. Go back to the previous code, how it worked for landscaping, and you're probably still better off. Just then enforce what we had back then. Because what's going to end up happening is what we're having to do, what we had to do then, what we're doing now, that makes it easy, you don't have to work that hard. I mean, shoot, you got to have, it's like Fayetteville. The more complicated the code becomes, the harder it is for the directors to have to walk through all that and make certain that you've got it. The harder it is for the architect to go through what you've got and determine what he's got to put into those plans. And then if you want a variance, now you're going in front of the Board of Adjustments. You're throwing at them more work to do. Why are we making this hard, is why, is what I would push. I mean, if you don't think that's enough, then you're absolutely right. Then you got to go look at the code and say, hey, we should do more. But it's like the three city examples I think I gave you. You guys didn't do more, and you didn't have to follow the code. You could have done more, right? Look yourself in the mirror if you think tree canopy is that important. If you think all the bushes and plantings are that important. Get it done, is what I would say.
Your Honor, I have a question.
Sure.
So in this parking lot is where the 144 plantings and everything is going to fit? How, in those two?
In those two.
Those green spaces?
144 plantings, yep. 38 trees, five evergreens.
That number did include the parking lot on East Lynn Street that's not reflected on this.
But, yep. Whoops. It's that smaller rectangle over there, so, okay.
Okay. And then, so Phase 3 and Phase 4, so what's going to be on there? Sorry, Joe, I didn't.
Yep, no, that's right. Those, Phase 3 and Phase 4 are the new employee entrance and then new factory and warehouse space.
So it's all, it's literally all going to be covered? So that's why you need those three parking spaces?
Correct.
For your.
Yep.
Okay.
Again, required by code as to how many. You guys tell us exactly how many parking spaces we have to have.
Okay.
By code. Yep. So we've added the extra parking there, and we'll actually add some more parking. We've got more homes to take down within the neighborhood that will create more parking spaces and more empty area ultimately that we would hope to be able to build on.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Your Honor, if I may.
Sure.
Do you know what the 144 plantings were going to cost you? As far as the plantings and the extra architectural work?
I believe the entire plantings were something between $40,000 and $50,000.
What, so these three?
Just the plantings alone.
Okay. And these three parking lots will, following up on Counselor Fonseca's question, these three parking lots are enough to support Phase 3 and Phase 4, correct?
Correct.
So what is your cost of building Phase 3 and Phase 4?
Something around $26 million.
And so we're here talking about you being, that you don't want to spend $40,000 on a $20 million development?
That's not what I'm saying. I did not bring this up because it was cost, Gary. I never said we couldn't afford $40,000.
Hey, then, if it's not cost, help me understand. You just think that that's too much, too much shrubbery, too many trees?
Yeah. I think it's like your city parking lot over here. You put in 144 plantings, and you will spend a day trimming everything. You will spend all your time working around the trees. Then what, you know, then you got to have to pick up the leaves. You have to do all the extra things that come with, all those things that come with 144 plantings. It's just, it's just, I would say, unreasonable. You and I might differ on that point, but I would say it's unreasonable.
And we do, because, like I said, I grew up, and I grew up not far from, I grew up three blocks away from your plant, okay? And I could take you down there and correct you that there were those streets, you, the sun didn't touch those streets when I grew up before Dutch elm disease came in, okay? Because elms were the number one tree in Marsh Town. And I could show you many streets in town. Look at old pictures of the courthouse. You can't even see the courthouse. That's the town I want back. I want that canopy. So yes, this is going to be one of those issues we're going to have to agree to disagree on. If I had my way, I mean, and Clayton already knows this, I was really upset with the Board of Adjustment and with Clayton. Because if I had my way, this would be a stronger ordinance for requiring more greenery. But that's, it's just difference of opinion.
And that's where we differ, Gary. You don't want the town to grow. You want us to go back to what it was. I want the town to grow and be bigger and better. That's why we're so differing in this opinion. I mean, that's where we are. So anyway, I wanted to hear that. Any other questions for me?
Your Honor, if I may.
May I?
Yeah, Joe, with upkeep on the plantings and all the trees, isn't that considered a business expense, that you can do a write-off?
It's a business expense. There is no write-off. It's a business expense.
But business expense is a write-off.
Sure. It takes away profit. It takes away money that you're able to invest in your employees, invest in the rest of your business. Absolutely.
I too. I grew up in the neighborhood at 610 Church Street, and there was a lot of trees down there, so.
Yeah, come down today.
Your Honor, we're still looking for some direction on, and I would mention, too, that in the council item, there are some bullet points that sort of frame the review. What review would we actually conduct of the landscape code, including looking at peer communities? And are they appropriately scaled? Are there substitutions, provisions, and variances within the code that we can adopt to address the site-specific challenges? So those kinds of things that we can include in our review.
And the review will be pretty much driven by planning and zoning, or by?
Again, I think that we would have the comprehensive plan process drive the review with particular attention, not just lumped in with a larger code review, but particular attention to this particular chapter.
Other comments up here? Otherwise, let's open it up to the public.
Good evening. Heather Thomas, Public Works. I just want to clarify a couple of comments that were made recently. The parking lot that was recently done out here does meet our current landscaping code. I believe there's five, maybe six, trees, and we have 40-some shrubs. The city staff went through the same process as a developer with plan review relating to landscaping on this project. I think one of the challenges or differences between this parking lot and the parking lots we're talking about here is the buffer yard landscaping requirements. When a parking lot buffers up to different zoning or different land use than what we had here. So just to clarify, this current parking lot right across the street that was just done in November, December, meets our current code requirements in relation to landscaping.
Lonnie Hoagland, 1408 East Main. This is exactly why I would like to get involved in this stuff. We got to cut red tape. That gentleman, Joe Carter, I know him a little bit. I don't know him well, but he can talk fast on his feet. He knows what he's talking about, and you need to grow Marshall Town. I don't know how many trees is 144 there, but there's not 144 in that parking lot. The code must be wrong. It must be too complicated. You need to make it simple so we don't build in La Grande, Iowa, instead of Fayetteville or Marshall Town. He's trying to do right, and we're trying to, it's, you need to help people. You need to make it so the code is workable. Bend over backwards to help people, and we're not, we're not doing it.
Aaron Carpenter, 802 North Fourth Street. I, I appreciate that Marshall Town Company is a major employer in the community, a huge part of the community, and has done so much in this neighborhood to clean it up. And that matters. That matters for wellness. That matters for public health. Just cleaning up and doesn't have the same effect as tree canopy does. I know this is what I get up here and talk about every single time. I'm sorry. You guys are probably tired of hearing it from me. It's more than aesthetics. It's infrastructure. It's cooling. It's air quality. It's walkability. Yes, this neighborhood doesn't have enough trees. It's one of the lowest tree-equi neighborhoods in the state. This code is not, it's not punishment. It's corrective. It's corrective for the years with the old code where trees and buffering were not valued, and they were the first things to get engineered out of projects. Our urban canopy is a mess. It's been decimated by storms, by pests, underinvestment. We're living with those losses. We, I understand that the old code, other developments didn't have to meet the same standards. It's not a reason to go backwards, though. We set this code in place three years ago on recommendations from the community and city staff. I think that, I think this is a place to hold the line. I was upset when the Board of Adjustment approved the variance, but I understood the, what was behind it. But changing the code to make it easier to not put in trees is the wrong direction for our community. Now, I am absolutely open to conversations about flexibility and creative solutions. Tree banks, partnerships, phased approaches, but not gutting the standards. And if we only require a canopy where it's easy or cheap, we're never going to fix the imbalance that exists, where our poorest neighborhoods, our least-tree neighborhoods, continue to be those neighborhoods. A more livable Marshall Town for all of the community means we all contribute. Thank you.
Lee Bottor, 401 Orchard Drive. Post-Drecho, we planted, I think, seven new trees, and we lost four. A lot of people are doing that around the community. I would like you guys to think about moving forward with what you've got here. But to address Aaron, here's a creative solution. How about, and I understand, Joe, I'd hate to clean up the parking lots, okay? Had to do that in former life. How about if there's extra trees that need to be planted? You go around and you work with the neighborhood, and you plant them within the neighborhood. And so you're developing your canopy. Money wasn't an issue? Maybe that's an idea, Joe, that you guys can work together and have a creative solution. You're still building the canopy in that area of the city. Thank you.
Anyone else? John?
Good evening. John Hall, Marshall Town Area Chamber of Commerce, 34 West Main Street. I appreciate the opportunity to be in front of you and talking about this. You know, when the new zoning code was adopted back in 2022, it was always kind of intended that there would be opportunities to discover how it works and if it all works well or doesn't all work well. It was effectively just taking code from a whole host of other zoning codes and kind of assembled together using a consultant to navigate that with the expectation that there were going to be things that needed to go and be revisited. And I think as a matter of pragmatism, looking at a parking lot, you know, from now six years ago to parking lot development today, to see the stark difference in the amount of required items as a part of that landscaping code is, I think, the exact kind of bifurcation that we needed when we needed to understand how this actually worked from an applicability perspective and certainly from a burden to development. And so I think as part of the comprehensive plan, there is a real opportunity to solicit more input, explore creative solutions that I think could be highly beneficial to the entirety of the community, especially as we look at future industrial development and new industrial expansion and growth opportunities that, you know, just doing a bunch of trees or landscaping and even new greenfield sites, does that have the same value as investing back into the heart of our community where we have lost tree canopy and trees? Or is there some creative solutions that we can explore related to that? But I think, you know, you were able to see tonight a pretty stark difference between prior code and current code that is creating a barrier to development and something that I think we should at least open the door to explore, you know, revisiting and providing solutions on. Thank you.
Anyone else on this tree topic?
Yes, please.
You know what I'm going to say. May I, Your Honor? Sure. Make a motion to leave it the way it is and move on. We had one business complaint. I haven't seen proof that, unless John Hall can tell us that other businesses have bypassed Marsh Town because of our landscaping issues, I don't see why we even need to look at this after just one business complaint. So my, I'd make a motion, we leave it the way it is. Is there a second to the motion?
A second.
Anybody up here want to have any further discussion?
Your Honor, if I may. I'm a tree hugger. I always have been. I like camping, all that kind of stuff. I think trees are cool. But when you look at how we change our zoning plans, the thing that really struck with me was we didn't, we don't allow the continuity between the zones. Nope, you did that then. Now you got to do it like this. And there is a very stark difference there. And I do think that it needs to go back to planning and zoning and look for opportunities, especially opportunities in continuity. And that helps the different companies in this town retain the look that they began with. Or, like Joe said, in 2019, we did that. But now we got to turn around and do this, and it would even look funky. I do think we have more opportunities in Marsh Town to keep thinking about planting trees and all of that. Like I said, I'm a tree hugger. But there's also, I also come from a farming background up in Grundy County, who I think have outlawed every tree in the county just so they can farm it. There's a practicality to it. Whether you like it or not, there's a practicality to it. And to put all that on the different companies here in town that have been here for decades, I think we can do a little better.
Your Honor.
Go ahead. Let's go.
I feel like we're racing to an answer that we don't know fully how to answer. The packet outlines four bullet points. I think it's appropriate for us to get the information. Understand what was the impetus behind this rewrite? How do we benchmark ourselves against other communities? It's clear the Marshall Town Company received their variance requests now, so this isn't holding anything out in the immediate. Why not get the facts first before we jump to a decision or answer? We're getting the cart way in front of the horse here. So I'd be more in proposal of allow Planning and Zoning to come back, or Clayton to come back and answer some of these basic bullet points on how we got here, what the intent is, and is there any flexibility in it?
Somebody else over here was?
Your Honor.
Yep.
I think, I mean, John Hall took some of the words right out of my mind somehow. You know, there has to be a difference for greenfield building versus infill. We need more infill in town. Regulations need to be sane, but at the same time, we have lots of goals to accomplish with retraining the town, making sure we do have appropriate buffer zones. So I'm along the lines of Barry or Mike. I think we need to take some time, but we should probably do a review to make sure we're doing the right things compared with other towns. I think all four of those bullet points, but we don't need to be in a rush to do it either.
Other counsel comments?
Your Honor. One of the options is make it as part of the comprehensive plan. That takes review and everything else, so I think that would be the option. I would say it's the most reasonable because it fits everybody's statement here is we need to just take the time to look at it and figure out what's going on.
Anybody else wish to speak on the motion?
Is there a, Your Honor, may I? Is there a more immediate feedback loop versus the full comprehensive review? Do these bullet items answer some of the questions we're needing that lead us to a full comprehensive review? Or does it open it up to slight modifications or tweaks to meet the intent? I just hate to have a lot of extra work done without a clear understanding of what we're trying to accomplish.
I think we could refer it to the Planning and Zoning Commission with these, looking at it through that lens.
Yeah, they really have Ned must have do the last year or two, just kidding, FNC folks. Okay. Any other comments? So let's go ahead and call the roll on. I'm taking the motion to be to direct staff to do nothing and leave the ordinance as it stands?
Yes, that's the motion on the table.
We'll call.
Kel?
No.
Lottie Hoff?
No.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Nichols?
No.
Schneider?
No.
Thompson?
Yes.
Fonseca?
No.
Okay. Floor is still open for another motion.
Motion for Clayton and Planning and Zoning to answer the questions outlined in the packet and bring that back to council for further review.
Second? Second? Anybody require a discussion? We'll call.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Fonseca?
Yes.
Kel?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Carrie, staff has direction. Please go easy on planning and zoning. They really have been doing a yeoman's chore the last year or two. But it's something to address. All right. Next item is requested by TIG Distributing, Inc., for a taxing.
The next item is property maintenance.
I'm sorry, I did skip that one. Update regarding 2025 Property Maintenance Code Project. Clayton?
Good evening again. I'll keep this brief. It's been a couple of months since I spoke to you about property maintenance enforcement here in town. Starting in April, I began issuing notices of violation to properties needing maintenance. I have about 114 or so out to date, out of the initial 190. That's about 60% or so. Little over 25 of those have been fully completed to date, so that represents about 20, 25% of those properties. The remainder remain in some fashion of in-progress. Largely, property owners have, that have spoken with me, have agreed, yeah, my property needs some work, and I need to get it done. I just need some time to do that. Reasonable request. Hey, can I have 90 days to take care of this? I've given people as much time as possible to work with it, as long as they keep those lines of communication open with staff and are making good faith attempts to complete work. We're going to continue to work with them. There have been a few cases that have been referred to the city attorney for municipal infractions. Those cases have been limited to properties that didn't communicate with me at all, did absolutely no work. I had no other form of communication to get their attention, essentially. Those cases have largely been just continued out or dismissed because once they got served by the sheriff, they then started communicating with us. We got a plan in place for them to make the maintenance to their property. So overall, I'd say it's been a successful project implementation so far. I'm not really hearing, many people say it's a financial hardship. It's more of a, I just need some time to get these things done. That was one of the main reasons I wanted to get as many of these notices out early in the year, to give people as much time through good construction season. Maybe not 110-degree weather, not the best time to be outside, but it's better than in the middle of winter when it's hard to do exterior work as well. So that's a real quick, brief synopsis there. Wanted to give you that update and let you know it's moving forward and time, it will take some time to start to see full impacts of being proactive in property maintenance enforcement. Thank you.
Your Honor. Your, oh, go ahead.
Appreciate the update. Thank you. I think we all feel the 114 properties are probably the most pressing, or what you walked us through, how you identified them. I would just encourage or challenge to continue this endeavor. This isn't a one-time project, and everything is fixed.
No, that would not be in my intent. And what my ideal goal would be is we identify the, a round for 2026 and get those notices out, maybe even yet this winter. Give them an extended timeframe. Hey, we know we're letting you know in December. You're probably not doing work over the middle of winter. We're going to give you till the end of May. So give them five, six months or so, so they can start to plan and budget it into their livelihood. So that would be my hope and goal as we move this forward.
Your Honor, I was going to ask a very similar question, but it's a little different than what Barry asked. So I know I've referred some properties, and I've seen some action on some of them. Would, so are you kind of just keeping a list of the next round of properties as that builds up, as people drive around town and report this? Or you or staff see that? Or how is that working? Or is it like a continual effort?
It's really continual. The list that I have, the initial 190, some of them have self-addressed themselves, and I've dropped them off, but then I've added on more to fill in those spaces. So it's been hovering at about 200 properties I've been working on, but that, like I said, I probably had 10 or 15 that have self-dropped themselves off. And, you know, if people are aware of, you know, high-profile ones, please let me know. We'll get them addressed. I'm trying my best to be methodical and try and keep properties, you know, in proximity to one another to get notices at similar times. So it's not, hey, well, how come I got it, but my neighbor next door didn't? I'm not going to sit here and pretend it's been a perfect system. I'm learning this along with everyone else here. We're testing this out. There's going to be adjustments. But continued, continual improvement and work with people and have that empathy for them, I think is important.
Your Honor, I have a question. Clayton, what has been the most common violation that you've seen? Like, or the top three or something?
Damaged roof, typically just shingles that have blown off or become unsecured, loose or loose, missing cracked siding or excessively peeling paint are probably the top three. Siding and roofing, I could probably point back to natural disasters as a cause. A lot of them lie in the path of the tornado or in high-impact drecho areas. The paint, I don't think I could tie that one back to a natural disaster.
Yeah, that one you can't. Is there any help, like, after the drecho and after the tornado, what help was given to these property owners, you know, for any of those things? If, I just want, I don't know if you know that, but if anybody else knows that, that would be great, just so. Because if that's the most common thing, then I'm guessing it's been because of insurance or something or type thing.
I'm not aware of what assistance was provided, or if any was even provided, short of insurance.
Okay, okay. I mean, and then I remember when you showed the map, Clayton. It was, a lot of the red dots were in war. it was, a lot of the red dots were in Ward One or in the north side of Marshalltown. So now I'm thinking about that and the roofing repairs and the siding repairs that are most common. I guess, I appreciate that you are being very patient with the homeowners and giving them time. And I just want to know, like, what would happen if they don't get it done within, like, December to May and all that? Like, what is the situation there if that, if it gets to that?
My intent would be if they're showing meaningful, you know, efforts to start the project, have demonstrated legitimate needs. I've had several people that they've had health issues, for example, and I'm not going to go and request their health records for any reason, but I'm kind of taking them at their word that they have legitimate health issues that prevent, we're going to give them time and try and connect them with resources as best as possible. But for the most part, people seem to be getting the work done within the timeframes they're requesting that they get done by. So I'm confident that the vast majority will just self-address themselves through the initial notice.
Sounds good.
And I have been providing information on our LED remediation grant for every property owner as well, because that's one in-house resource we have. And several property owners have been able to take advantage of that to be able to get some of the repairs done at free through the federal grant.
Other questions, comments up here? Did I call for public comment yet?
Lonnie Hogland, 1480 Main. You're really trying to get the trees to grow again and everything, but I think you need to realize it's really important to have the houses looking nice and the commercial buildings looking nice. It looks like you're trying to create a code that's enforceable. You need to make it enforceable so the police can do what they need to do and make it fair, because I like the word he said empathy. You need to have a little compassion with the people, but you need to make a rule. And if the people don't do it, the city needs to do it for them. The town looks terrible in spots. But I spoke with a nice counselor, not supposed to name names, but she said it looks a lot better than other towns. Well, it's got its gold stars. It looks great, but let's make a code that's enforceable, that has compassion to the people and give them a little bit of leeway. You know, if a person's having health issues and make it look good, make it enforceable, make it simple.
I don't have a public comment written because I was doing my two-hour and 15-minute round trip from Walmart to home. But, uh, yeah, Marco Yepes Gomez, 11 North Sixth Street. So first, I am really happy to hear that there's not that many finance or buildings or houses or properties that are having, you know, financial hardship. Initially, I was worried that, you know, it would be like a quarter of them. And, you know, we were just going to, you know, take legal action with these properties. Basically, I'm guessing that's, uh, anyways. And so I wanted to ask Clayton, what are, like, the consequences of not, you know, fixing these properties? I think Councilmember Fonseca alluded to that question, but are we going to take these houses away or these properties away? And then are they going to be added to our surplus property? And then what's the plan there? I also, I'm curious if maybe, you know, if there's 20 properties or whatever that really honestly can't fix, you know, their property or whatever, if we could, you know, help them with lost ops or lost funds or whatever. But yeah, so, yeah, my question is what's going to happen with the properties that aren't fixed? Thank you.
City code, as well as Iowa code, affords the ability for a city to do a municipal infraction. That'd be $750 fine for the first offense, $1,000 fine for each additional offense with each additional day the violation can sit or persists, considering an additional offense. That's the legal terminology there. With that said, that is an option of last resort we want to use. That is not something that we're wanting to go out and do. I don't want to send anyone to court. One, that means I have to go to court and takes me away from other duties that are important to the city. Now, as for taking a property, we would only be afforded the ability to take a property to the extent that it's been legally abandoned. So no one's residing there. All utilities are shut off. It's in a dilapidated condition. Iowa code does afford opportunities for cities to take those properties. Those are, that's going to be a minority of the properties we're discussing here. That is a route that we may need to consider on several properties. But again, it should be an option of last resort for the city. We already have surplus property that we're having to find buyers for or uses for. It becomes a question of do we want to continue to add for that? Or is it better to keep these properties in private hands for private benefit? And I think that's the goal of the city here. But again, legal action is intended to be an option of last resort. Want to be as empathetic and give people as much opportunity to address this. But there likely will come a time where if things aren't getting completed, we might have to make those tough decisions and it's not going to be fun. I suspect may not be popular, but that may be the options that are available to us at that point. Thank you.
Other public comment on this one?
Marco Yepes Gomez, 11 North Sixth Street. So first of all, I do think Clayton's doing a good job on it. I think it's necessary to enforce the code. I guess I'm just worried about like the super, like, it would be like the super small minority now that, you know, that we know that not many people have these financial hardships. And, you know, I've been pretty vocal that we kind of have like this vacant infill properties that all across like the north side. And I'm worried that even if it's, you know, 10 or whatever, that they're going to add to this vacant property that we have on the north side. And I'm just worried that we won't have a plan and it'll just, you know, come to demolishing and just doing nothing with it. So I guess I'm not really saying much other than that's what I'm worried about. But I am happy that it's, that code's being enforced. And yeah, thank you.
Staff direction?
Your Honor, was this a staff report for the evening?
Thank you. All right, yeah, that's right. That was an update. Let's go on to number three, request by TIG Distributing, Inc. for TIF incentive for packs for business expansion. John?
I'll kick it off real quick. So TIG Distributing, which is headquartered in Marshalltown, is proposing an expansion of their existing facility. The proposed development, which includes a $12 million investment in a 90,000 square foot building expansion and also includes $3 million in new equipment and machinery, totals an estimated investment of $15 million. TIG has indicated that the project will create about approximately 50 new jobs. The TIF rebate that is requested is an amount not to exceed 1.65 million over 10 years, a portion of that which would be future city property tax revenue if the project proceeded without TIF assistance.
Good evening, John Hall, Marshalltown Area Chamber of Commerce, 34 West Main Street. Happy to be in front of you tonight with this expansion opportunity. We've been engaged in these conversations with TIG dating back about nine or 10 months now, kind of navigating through potential expansion consideration that they've been looking at. Yes, you heard from the city administrator regarding kind of the bulk of the details of the overall development agreement as it's proposed in front of you. Really, the rationale related to the need to do a TIF financing agreement is a competitive market. Right now, the opportunities that were kind of presented in front of the company that we were battling against was expansion in Des Moines Market where they have additional facilities in some leased space that they could continue to expand in versus owning and actually developing here in Marshalltown. And so in interest of trying to see additional investment happen in our community as well as the job creation that came with it, this is ultimately the development agreement that we were able to strike with the company and the proposed terms in front of you this evening. With that estimated 50 in the job count, base wages are starting about $17 an hour and going on up to about, to over $50 an hour, depending on the position. Average annual salary is looking at $53,355 with a total annual payroll of a little over $2.5 million and a variety of different roles, including assembly technicians, supply chain planners, IT specialists, engineers and managers. So really solid expansion of a company that's been here and has the land to continue to grow and expand. So at this point, I'd like to ask, we have a couple of representatives from the company. So Tyler with ATI Group and Jarrett with TIG, if they want to come forward and speak a little bit about the company and the expansion.
Thank you, John. This is Jarrett and I represent TIG Distributing. And my brother and I, we own the company and we started this all the way back. Actually, the original founder was 1991. So we've been in Marshalltown since 1991 and continue to expand. I think I've talked to probably almost every business owner in Marshalltown looking for additional space. And there is no other additional space for what we're trying to do. And so eventually we were trying to figure out, okay, we've got locations in Des Moines. We're trying to make a national presence, but we also like to have our headquarters remaining in Marshalltown because it's founded here. And so we're also in Illinois, expanding there. We're buying other businesses and we want to continue to actually put this operation on the map. And so we own, currently, I think there's 12 to 14 acres on the site. And so the initial phase is to expand another 90,000 square foot. And once we get comfortable around that, then we'll go ahead and fill that space up. And then we've got additional capacity for about 240,000 square foot onsite. And then in addition to that, just continue to find different areas in order to expand in Marshalltown. It's a nice corridor for us at least. We've, we serve Waterloo out of here. We also serve the Quad Cities out of this location as well. And we're doing anything from engine assembly to wiring kit harnesses for tractors off highway. And we want to continue to expand that operation. One of the opportunities here as well is just jobs. And so I just, we just hired somebody, just made the announcement last week. And we say, hey, where are you guys working out of? And it's going to be Marshalltown. Unfortunately, right now, we don't have space for them. So we plan to begin this immediately. And again, it's a competitive situation. As you guys know, right in Des Moines here, you can get a lot of space. There's about 2 million square foot open right now in Des Moines. And it's pretty cost-effective. Also, the same thing in Pontoon Beach, Illinois, Illinois, Chicagoland. But for Marshalltown, for us, it's strategic. It's a family-owned business. We are from Iowa, originally from eastern Iowa. And so for us, Marshalltown is important. And we've got a lot of people that are really, really good. So, you know, we're attracting white-collar opportunity for jobs. We've got plenty of blue-collar opportunity for jobs as well. And so we've got good, high-paying jobs. They're not something where we're just looking at a paladin-palat situation. We're doing a lot of service-oriented work and it's higher skilled. And so for that reason, we thought that Marshalltown would be a strategic opportunity for us, not only just with the workforce, but also just the, you know, just the logistics of it. And so with that, we're asking for, you know, as you guys know, probably construction costs are all-time high at this point. It seems like you think something comes down and the next you know, something else goes up. And so with us, we do have a lot of capacity that we could expand in Des Moines and other areas. But I think for us is we want to stay in Iowa. We're here in Iowa and we want to continue to grow in Iowa. And we thought that, you know, as, just as Marshalltown Company and what he was suggesting before, there's a reason why we're here. If you go to Des Moines, the requirements and some of the things, just like landscaping is an example, is completely different than what it could be or is in Marshalltown. There's other requirements that are, that in these larger municipal areas, the cities, it allows us to invest dollars into buildings, infrastructure. I'm not saying that, I'm not, you know, getting on a debate as to whether we're going to have green space or not, green space or landscape or not landscaping. But I'm just saying the opportunities that we, that we have here in Marshalltown and the requirements that you guys have make it more cost-effective for us to actually invest into Marshalltown and despite higher costs, construction costs at this point. So we're hoping that we can have the TIF, allow our construction costs to come down. And then by the time that we fill this building up, which we will, and we're going to continue to expand, and it'll allow us, hopefully by that time, the construction costs will come back down again. Marshalltown's more competitive than a Des Moines or a Illinois, Chicagoland, those types of areas, and allows us to continue to expand and then serve our customers here in Iowa. We are off-highway based, which that, what does that mean? Primarily, it's ag markets. That's where we want to exist. There's opportunities within Marshalltown to expand that with the rail as well as just being located close to factories. And we want to expand into that area. So any questions for me before I turn it over to Tyler with ATI?
Your Honor, if I may? You may. Jared? Are you going to consolidate your operations on May Street into this addition? And then maybe, I'm guessing you probably want to tear that down and do something new on that side.
So actually, so Joe and Lisa own that building. So that, those are our previous business partners. And so we haven't made no announcements to consolidate operations at this point. So at this point, we are not planning on consolidating the May Street. We're talking to them right now to go, hey, if you hear something, don't try to kick us out of that building. And so, yeah, at this point, we want to continue to expand. Now, if there's opportunities to consolidate some of the different facilities, we're going to be outgrowing the 90,000 square foot, which then is going to require us to get additional space as well. So I think at this point, we haven't really gone down the path of consolidation as much as there's, there's so much opportunity that we're being fed at this point from our customers. And they're saying, hey, if you don't, if you don't expand quick, you're going to lose the opportunity or you're going to have to bring it someplace else. And for us, the logistics makes sense because we're so close to those factories.
Your Honor, may I?
You may.
Jared, you were talking about jobs and, you know, creating jobs from this expansion. Could you let us know what a young professional would need to major in or get certified in to join your team? What would, what would they need to get?
I mean, some of our jobs, I mean, we kind of, we kind of covered the gamut. We're full value-added services. And so we're employing anybody from a professional accountant, CPA type, to an engineer, sales and marketing, somebody that would assemble engines, someone that as an entry level would be able to drive a forklift. And so there's a certification process there. And so we are working with, through recruitment, through the local community colleges here in town. But I would say, you know, as I was telling John, I think the biggest challenge for us is to, when we say we want you to move to Marshalltown, they're like, where is Marshalltown, Iowa at? And if they're, if they're, you know, professional, it's sometimes difficult them, for them. They'll take the job, they'll, they'll drive up here. But we're thinking about, okay, how do we actually get people that are from the surrounding communities of Marshalltown? And we're actually attracting lots of them to come through our facility that actually live around here. But to answer your question, it's really all over. It could be somebody that's got a CPA degree. It could be an engineer or it could be somebody that has, you know, no college. They just, they're looking for right out of high school. They want to join our team. And then for us is we're not that corporate yet where, you know, for us, it's like a lot of our family members, you know, they may not be college-educated, but they own businesses because they've worked hard. And so if you show up to our, one of our facilities and you work hard and you may not have a degree, but you're willing to work hard, put the hours in and learn, we're willing to put you through things like, you know, the DMAC training courses. I think up here, there's a program that's like a 260E or an F program and allows to take folks that may not have the formal education, but to educate them through a community college in order to get the skills necessary to, you know, imagine taking 26 different components of a wiring harness kit and assembling those into a kit that ultimately you send to a factory or you send to an aftermarket tour dealer. And so for us, it's all over the board, really. And we're looking for, all the time, for good people. So there's really no, you know, qualifications that we wouldn't necessarily have, you know, at TIG. And the good news is, is we're buying additional companies. And so as we do that, you probably, if you do a search right now for TIG, you'll see the last acquisition we just made. And we, we're And we, we're going to continue to do that, continue to push the envelope and we want to continue to, you know, the thing for us is it's sometimes difficult to go, hey, we're going to spend, you know, there's 240,000 square foot ability there. That's a, that's a big project. So if we're investing, what was it, 15, 18 million dollars in this project and it's only 90,000 square foot, a lot of equipment, you know, 240,000 square foot can be much, much more. For us as investors as well, as we're figuring out, okay, we want to do this as a test. We want to prove that we can do this in Marshalltown. We've got the people to do it around Marshalltown area. We can recruit, retain, keep customers happy. And then once we've got that, that's where we kind of do it in phases. We talked about even a larger phase of, I think the initial one was like 120,000 square foot or 160,000 square foot. Right now is not a good time to invest in that just because of the way things are in terms of the cost. And so I think if we get this first one underneath our belt, I think there's going to be more after that.
Okay, thank you. And so you guys are right now next to MICA, right? On, yeah, by H and J.
Yeah, it's off of Rex, yeah, Rex Raiden Road.
Okay, and so then your development would be in that next lot, like it would be on the east side?
It'll be towards the north and then also towards the, what is it, to the west?
Oh, okay.
Yep. Still get my directions. I'm originally from Eastern Iowa, so still getting directions.
They have different directions over there?
Yeah, they do.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, you're welcome. Any other questions?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thanks.
Good evening. My name is Tyler Leo. I'm with ATI Group. We are a development and construction company based out of Ankeny. I don't have a whole lot to add to that. That was all well said. We've been working with TIG for about a year and a half now. Jarrett's a little humble. Their company is growing like a weed in the best way possible. And I just want to commend him and his commitment to Marshalltown. I mean, he brought all of his boys here to listen. He's committed to this town and we're really excited to work with them and continue to grow. So not much more to add. We're excited to work with you guys on this and looking forward to this project. So thank you, guys.
Your Honor, I've got a question for Tyler.
Questions or comments? Yeah, you don't get to get by that easy.
So why aren't you moving your company here to Marshalltown?
Well, you know, I haven't had the pleasure to do a lot in Marshalltown. We're a development company based out of Ankeny and we're really excited. And I also want to commend Clayton and the fire, you know, chief of police, everybody that we've been working with through the site planning process. It's been a wonderful experience so far. So we're still going through planning, we're still getting the construction budget dialed in. These guys need modern space, you know, this is, there's not a lot of space in Marshalltown that fits these guys' needs. They need truck cords, they need the right dock equipment, they need clear heights. And these guys have been wonderful to work with. So commend the staff as well and we're really excited, but hopefully many more projects to come. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. For, for a city that's been hit with a couple of big weather events and worried about where people could live and that sort of thing, having a problem of having enough space to expand is fun to hear up here, truly. So thank you.
Your Honor, Carol, what do you need from us?
Let's see, we are looking for direction on whether or not to bring back a formal resolution of support referencing the TIF commitment that's outlined in the council memo for this evening and directing staff to initiate the drafting of a development agreement.
Yes.
I'll take that as a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Anybody want to discuss this any further out there or up here? Roll call.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Fonseca?
Yes.
Cal?
Yes.
Lottie Huff?
Yes.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Okay, well, the technical term for that is a no-brainer up here. Thank you. Very good. All right. Fiscal year 2027 budget discussions.
Hey, that's me again. You ready? Okay, so council might recall that during the budget discussions for fiscal year 26, there were sentiment among council that you would like to start really discussing the budget earlier before it's kind of baked and give council an opportunity to weigh in earlier in the process. And so we have kicked tires around on what we think would be an appropriate review. I've provided a memo for you. The memo would outline sort of the historical expenditures. We would include a budget comparison report as we cover this, and this would only go, apply to general fund discussions, or I'm sorry, general fund budgets. And we would provide some historical expenditures by function. What are the key cost drivers? Some opportunities that we've seen as far as increasing efficiency. Are there any fee-for-service opportunities or places where we're maybe undercharging for a fee-for-service? And then any specific challenges or investments we think might be needed in the next three to five years? I've included a proposed schedule for those discussions leading up to what we, where we would typically kick off the budget process. And the one, one slightly different thing that we want to do is bring forward in the first discussion, just a review of the work that we currently contract through the city. So there may be discussion around things that we could either do in-house or not do at all. And then what other financial commitments we have to outside agencies. So looking for feedback on the proposed approach.
Board is open for feedback.
I support having a longer time to discuss and this looks like a reasonable schedule.
Your Honor, Carol, I was glad to see this proposal. I think we should go this direction.
I'll take that as a motion and a second. Any discussion? Any discussion out there? Roll call.
Lottie Huff?
Yes.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Fonseca?
Yes.
Cal?
Yes.
Good. Staff has its direction and our next item is changes to West End Park Phase Two.
Carol and I have been in discussion with Marshalltown Community School District Administration. We've been researching information pertaining to this potential project with the help of Heather and we wanted to bring this to you today for discussion and get some direction from you all. So what is proposed is a new trail expansion and bridge installation project in West End Park. Here, I wanted to show you what we were looking at. So in red on the map is the proposed glow trail expansion in West End Park. And so that would be the city's responsibility, including a bridge installation. Yellow is going to be the proposed Marshalltown Community School District trail expansion, which would be a glow trail as well. And then orange is going to be normal trail expansion. And then in green is a preliminary plan for future connectivity to Miller Middle School and then Iowa River's Edge Trail via 13th Street and Boone Streets. So I wanted to show you this overview, including the preliminary plan, just to show how this connectivity throughout this site of town could really be expanded in the future. So Marshalltown Community School District was looking at a glow trail expansion, which is very exciting and unique. So if we were to collaborate with MCSD, this is a picture of what the trail may look like. The glow aggregate has a 20-plus-year lifespan. And if Marshalltown was to move forward with this, we would be one of three glow trails in Iowa, which is super exciting. Moving forward with this would also address some of the commitments that the city has made through the Arts and Culture Master Plan. And currently for West End Phase Two, we do have $600,000 budgeted in current allocation. Here you'll see the cost estimate. This includes the trail concrete, the glow stones that would be needed for the city's portion to commit to this collaboration with the school district. And the installation of a bridge, which would be comprehensive of the installation, the mobilization, seeding, all of those things that would go with installing a trail width bridge in West End Park. We've also included the engineering, construction and contingency costs at 32% of the total project, which would be $617,595. City staff is committed to fundraising for that additional cost, which is over the allocated budget in order to move forward with this collaboration with MCSD. And we would like your direction and answer any questions that you may have.
Your Honor? So Kelsey, question. So the glow stones replace lighting?
That is a great question. We do think that this would replace some of the lighting needs back there. It is, it comes, the glow comes off of the solar power, so it does light up pretty well. Right now, there is no lighting back in that area in West End Park. So we do think that it would, it would give some light to that area right now. I don't know if future expansion would be necessary for lighting in that area. Hi.
I've seen some of, some of the pictures of this, this glow lighting and people that have put it in, it's incredible. I mean, it looks really neat. And the cost of it actually isn't that much on the entire project. So I think it looks really good.
I think this is one of the opportunities the city has to collaborate with a different organization, but also installing something that will help with safe walks to school. It will revitalize West End Park even further. The connectivity for parking alone is amazing between 13th Street, West End Park, Franklin Field, and then the other neighborhood surroundings. So it would really be an interesting way instead of just a plain way to do it, I would say, to elevate that, that trail and connectivity and walkability in that area.
Your Honor, you know, as one of the trail advocates set up here, I'm really excited to see this. I'm really glad you put in the part to connect this to the Iowa River's Edge Trail. The value of trails comes in connections. A lot of people live over there on the west side of town, could easily access 13th Street by walking or biking now if we were to complete that. I know that's not in the $617,000, but I totally support this effort and thanks for volunteering to do the fundraising for the additional, about $18,000.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I applaud the collaborative nature of this, pulling in the Marshalltown School District, the city. We are all investing a lot of money in, in this area of town, whether it be what we've done at 13th Street, what the school district's doing with Miller and Franklin Field. It just makes sense that we come together and continue to, to push this forward and elevate it. So I'm very much in support of it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tennis courts is kind of the last major city-school district joint project and the pickleball courts are busy, the tennis courts are busy, and it's been a real draw for people here. And then I know Jeff and I probably, we attend the meetings that the state has with other trails around here and, and I'm obviously the other two that have them, but I also get the emails and the magazines of the trail enthusiasts and this is the new big thing that's attractive to people.
Your Honor, if I may? So the $600,000 that we currently have is from bond funds. We originally planned to use those dollars to do other work at West End Park, which would include a parking lot and a restroom facility and I think a few other small elements. So what we would do is use the funds that we have now from the past bond issue and we would reissue additional bonds to complete that work in the future. So right now, we could, we will still continue with, because we did recently acquire land through that parking lot and that restroom expansion. So we would continue with the design and engineering of that and the next time we issue bonds, we would issue those for that expansion.
I think it just makes sense that why they're redoing Franklin Field and everything else that we move ahead with this.
Public? Discussion?
Could someone make it kind of crystal clear where this is? My son and I are sitting here going, where's this trail at? Can you give a guy some landmarks? I don't know.
So the round field is Franklin Field. That's a track from Franklin Field.
So blue is the city property line for West End Park. So that's just outlining city property for the park there. The red would be the city's responsibility for the glow trail and the yellow would be the school's responsibility for the glow trail.
Tracks to what? What is the big building on the lower right?
I'm sorry, are you asking about the orange line or a specific building?
That goes to a building?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. So the, the green on the very bottom?
I'm seeing yellow.
Yellow is going to come right?
That's Miller School.
Yes, are you talking green on the bottom?
Clear at the bottom, down?
Yes, okay.
There, can you let us know what that is?
Yes, so green, when it kind of jants off of 13th Street there, that's going to Miller Middle School. And then it will come down to Boone Street and veer off towards Iowa River's Edge Trail for a connection. That's a preliminary plan for the future. So right now, we're talking about red, yellow and orange.
Perfect.
Okay, thank you. Yes, absolutely.
I'm going to call you Vanna.
Thank you, Gary.
So what do you need from us?
So I have a question. There's a lot of street there. Will those, those glow locks be sufficient lighting? Because that's kind of a dark hole back there if you don't have lighting.
Theron is here from the school district to answer questions too. He may know a little bit more about the glow aggregate than I do. Thank you, Theron.
Theron Shudie, 507 Craig Circle and Superintendent of the Marshalltown Community School District. So I want to give a shout out to Heather Thomas as well, who was actually the first person that approached us about considering the development of a trail as a result of some of the construction challenges we were having at Franklin Field as it related to the 13th Street sidewalk. From that initial discussion, knowing that time is of the essence, assuming that we would want to consider continuing the, our part of the project with Construct, who's probably our largest contractor down there and local. We looked at what would it take to turn the whole sidewalk from Main and 13th, basically where the south ticket booth is on that intersection to the north ticket booth? What would it take to make that an eight-foot sidewalk instead of a six-foot sidewalk that currently exists? Because the project was going to compromise maybe a third, a fourth to a third of a sidewalk. And so we would have to invest in replacing the old sidewalk to make it the minimum width, as I understand it, to qualify as a trail. And then obviously, the intent would be to take that trail down the northern boundary of Franklin Field where the visitor kind of entrance used to be to the bleachers and then hook it to the edge of our property line so that it could eventually connect with the city's part of the trail and basically near Brady Creek. As far as a glow trail idea, one of the board members, as I was informally bouncing this idea around, trying to figure out whether it was something that we wanted to pursue, had said, hey, did you see this recent article on Ankeny having established a glow trail? So I contacted their Park and Rec Director to kind of try to find out more information as to who to reach out to and, you know, what's it going to take financially and otherwise. The answer to the question is the glow trail is most effective when there isn't other lighting that's impeding on it. So the darker it is in the area, the more it illuminates. But I think probably as far as the park, for the park purposes, you know, we'll want to take a look at what it will take, if anything, beyond the trail, the glow trail to provide safe access and use to it. But I thought Kelsey, who I met for the first time last week in a meeting with Carol, did a beautiful job illustrating very succinctly, you know, what, what the proposal is from the school district standpoint, time is of the essence because obviously we're in the midst of completing the Franklin or working towards the completion of the Franklin Field project and been asking Matt Jensen, you know, when? And, um, been asking Matt Jensen, you know, when would we need to, when, when would we need to look at doing our sidewalk portion of it as well as a potential trail? Uh, when I asked him prior to the last 15 inches of rain, it was around, uh, the beginning of September or so. Um, so I then, uh, reached out to, uh, Carol, um, about, you know, help me, as I tried to recommend, uh, and get support from our board to do this project that we weren't planning on six, you know, months ago. Um, help me understand what the city's commitment is to eventually continuing that work through West End Park. Because what I don't want to do is create a trail or a glow trail and have it lead to nowhere for two, three, four years. And so, um, this all has come about pretty quick. A lot of it is opportunity based on our circumstance with our Franklin Field project. But I commend Heather and Carol and, uh, Kelsey for their support and willingness to have further discussion as to can we make this happen for the community. And, um, and I agree wholeheartedly with all the comments that have been made with, um, you know, the renovation and rejuvenation of that 13th Street District, which includes the city's role as far as West End Park. I think this would just be further icing on the cake for that if there's a willingness and appetite to, uh, take it on. So, thank you. Any questions regarding the school district part of it or?
Your Honor, Theron, I just wanted to say you're right. When there's competing light with the glow trail, the glow trail doesn't really do anything. I saw Ankeny's in the middle of the day when the sun was out. Yeah, it just doesn't show up.
No, but if the, if you were to implement like walking lights or streetlights, similar to what we're going to be implementing on the walkways of Franklin Field for the evening events, that would deter from the effect of the, the glow. So that'll have to really be looked at by an engineer or something, then someone that knows how this glow stone works. Thanks.
Any more questions, comments up here? Otherwise I'll open up the public.
Your Honor, I do have a question.
Sure.
Kelsey, so for the glow trail, so when Counselor Thompson brought up, like, if it would show up, so at what, like, how dark does it need to be for it to show up? And I guess is, would the West End Park be open for every, I don't, I don't know with like the curfew and everything that we have going on, like, that we just passed? Um, so what, what should we expect when, to see it, you know, and the attraction of it and the hours of it, the opening hours, I guess, of it? Yes. So, um, the, the daylight that's needed to make it glow, I'm not sure on that information. I will need to, um, do some more research and bring information back to you and be happy to work with Carol to do that. Um, the hours that would be open would be park hours. And so I, I personally think with the school district, it's exciting to think of a football game happening at Franklin Field and people being able to have dinner on 13th Street or what have you and walk through West End Park on the glow trail and get to the ticket booth at Franklin Field. And so that's what I'm picturing in my mind. Um, the park does close at 11:30 currently, so that would be the hours that it would be closing, yes. Did I answer all of your questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Public comment? You need a motion to move forward?
Yep, just to proceed, yep.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Fonseca?
Yes.
Cal?
Yes.
Ladihoff?
Yes.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Staff has its direction.
Thank you.
This is pretty exciting, really.
Very exciting. I'm excited about it. Thank you very much.
All right. Number six, uh, to seven, things to talk about. Request for your Marshalltown company to vacate East Lynn Street between South 8th Avenue and the railroad tracks.
I so moved.
Moving, moving to address, to, to tell staff. The motion is to direct staff to move forward with that, um, proposition coming to a next, uh, the next meeting.
That sounds like good. So I, I move that this would move forward, uh, for, by the city administration to bring this forward as a motion for the next meeting.
You know what? I'll second that for you, Greg.
Discussion up here. I don't see this one being too controversial. Any public discussion on this one? Let's call the roll.
Cal?
Yes.
Ladihoff?
Yes.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Fonseca?
Yes.
Direction on that one, good. And the last, uh, item we're going to discuss is request by Dennis Olson to vacate the parcel 8418-36-402-010, a parcel located along Jackson Street near the intersection with South 13th Avenue. Who takes the lead on this one?
Can we talk about this one?
Yeah. Carol's had too many of these. She had to.
No, I, I was the one that put them up here. Uh, this is a request that came to us from the adjacent property owner. Um, let's see if I can, do you want me to pull up an image? That might help us. Uh, it's a small little sliver of a parcel that the city acquired, what'd we say, it was about 40 years ago?
Forty.
Forty, 50 years ago, and we have no idea why we have it.
External bowling alley.
I mean, that, that's kind of probably the, the layman's way of putting it is we can't identify a reason for, as I say, to have it. So the owner of the farm field has, uh, requested that the parcel be vacated. Uh, staff's intent would be, um, have direct staff to move this forward. Uh, we would provide equal opportunity to both the farm parcel as well as the western adjacent developed parcel, since it kind of goes into their parking lot a little bit. Um, Echwood would have equal opportunity to request vacation of the portion adjacent to their parcel.
Can I interrupt?
Yes.
While Vanna's up there, what's the building to the west?
West?
He, oh, he did, he did eastern Iowa directions there.
Yes, that's SNT.
SNT.
This is the old Marshall manufacturer.
Okay.
So this is 12th Avenue, Jackson, and this is Ellie Mine. Okay. Thank you. Very good.
Now, now I'm oriented.
My new job.
No, how much do we get, how much does it cost to get you one of those wands or?
Yes.
Uh, I'm sorry.
Oh, go ahead.
Um, did he approach us?
Yes.
Okay. And what, what's his plans for?
Uh, Dennis Olson is looking to build a personal storage facility, um, for his own personal usage.
So he is gonna, it's not going to be just farm ground. He's, he's looking at?
He's actively looking to develop, I think it's about a 40 by 60, 40-foot by 60-foot building. Um, uh, plans for additional develop in the future, but immediate plans for just a single storage building for personal usage.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions, comments by the council? Public comment on this one? Do we have a motion to direct staff to do it?
I'd move, uh, to direct staff to proceed.
Second.
Roll call.
Ladihoff?
Yes.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Fonseca?
Yes.
Cal?
Yes.
Oh, good, I win. We're adjourned. That's 7:52. It was close. I had to go before eight, she had to go after. Actually, no, we sent, was it 8:15 or eight?
Exactly. I cut it off at the knees. Damn right. I was giving everybody a stink eye.